Clock, I'll call the order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Don.
Yeah.
Dan.
Here.
Sherry.
Here.
Wanda. Joe.
Here. We have forum. At this time, would anybody like to abstain for financial or non-financial conflict of interest?
No.
No.
I have none. With that, I would ask for approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion?
Are we deleting Mike's request off since he's not going to be here?
No, we need to get the load limits going.
What about the?
To the state.
The clock.
We can, anything that there's questions, we can move, but I told them we would just go through with them. With that, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. Okay. Public comment. Mr. Anderson.
First of all, good evening and congratulations, Mr. Chairman. Um, something happened last week that was kind of interesting. Involving a Yankton County resident who was awarded the Master Pork Producer Award, one of three in South Dakota. He and his family. And I, I just thought that he should be recognized at the meeting. Carl Schenk and his family have only been doing this for three years. But the person that nominated him for the award was Dr. Barb Thaler from South Dakota State, Bob Thaler from South Dakota State, who had been down to Carl's place and was really impressed with the fact that how hands-on he was, how he was doing chores, how the member of the family were involved at the quality of what he was turning out of his barns. They've never awarded this to someone with only three years' experience before. The other people have been doing it. One was for twenty years and the other one was close to forty, and that's more of the standard. It's a it's quite an award for both Carl and his family. One of the pictures that they showed during the slideshow was Carl with his grandson in the barns. So it's, it's, I think it's something you should be recognized for. And it's, it's a rare honor for anyone to receive an award like that from his peers. That's it.
Any else care to make a public comment? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. We will move on to, is Steve here? Well, probably not. Okay, ambulance quarterly reports.
Is he coming?
No, he was, he's unable to attend.
Was anybody from the department coming, do you know?
He didn't know.
Yeah, he had.
Okay.
I think they're, they're a short paramedic, so they're working extra hours right now.
Okay.
You know, just looking at.
And we've got his report.
Looking over the report, we really got to hand it to our ambulance for what they've had to do the past almost two years, really stepping up. Their call volume continues to increase. There's a great strain on ambulances statewide and Yankton County is no exception, so hats off to them for what they do.
Yeah, record calls.
I would agree.
And short folks and.
And the prospect, it looks like call volumes are going to keep increasing and the shortfalls, I don't. With Manning, I don't see that improving anytime soon. I hope it does, but tough spot.
Anybody like to approve the quarterly report?
I'll move approval of the EMS report.
I'll second.
Then motion by, low second by Clemish to approve quarterly report. Any further comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, register deeds, please. Mr. Hahnoff.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Can you hear me? Yep, okay. Well, our fourth quarter was good, the second best fourth quarter we've had. It was thousand dollars less collected than our fourth quarter in 2020, but still very good. Three months in the fourth quarter, October, November, and December. In terms of fees collected, they were pretty much mirror images. October, we collected thirty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty, November, thirty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight, and December, thirty-three thousand two hundred and fifty-seven. Breaking down a few of the individual items. We had two hundred and forty-nine birth certificates issued. And that's an increase of about a hundred from the fourth quarter of 2020. We had four hundred and thirty-four death certificates issued. And that's a, also an increase of a hundred and some. Twenty-three marriage licenses, eighty-one marriage certificates, two hundred and ninety-five deeds, three hundred and one mortgages, two hundred and eighty-four mortgages satisfied. Copies revenue, thirteen thousand two hundred and eighty-one, transfer fees, forty-three thousand four hundred and sixty-seven. And regular fees, forty-four thousand two hundred and fifty-seven. If you take the hundred and one thousand, one hundred and fifty-five, fifty that we collected in the fourth quarter. It was forty-three percent transfer fees, thirty-three percent recording and filing fees, thirteen percent copies revenue, and eleven percent for vital records issued. I have my annual report nearly done. As usual, I'm waiting for the state to give me some numbers. And so I'll deliver that to you in February if that's okay.
Sure.
But that's all I have for this month.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Brian, for you and your staff, and you have a new person up there as well.
We have a new part-timer, Diane Hobden. She retired from a thirty-seven-year career with HSC, and we were lucky to get her. She was looking for something that offered the hours that we had available, so I think she's going to be a great member of the team.
Tell her welcome from us. Move approval of the register deeds quarterly report.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Sheriff. Saw him. There you are, Jim.
Evening.
You should all have the reports, I guess, and I, I think I covered this the last time I was here, but we ended the year civil section, about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in fees, and the jail revenue was about one million two hundred and fifty-two thousand, so over last year, it's quite a bit more. Any questions?
Everything going okay over there?
Fighting a little COVID in the jail.
Yeah.
And outside of the jail.
I think it's everyone.
No, thank you for the report.
Yeah, yeah, it is, and just FYI, last year I looked up, we only had nine hundred and twelve on the jail, so it is quite an improvement. Certainly. So, thank you.
All right.
I'll move approval of the sheriff's report.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second, any further comments? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. BSO, Cody. How you doing?
Oh, good evening, great. Not used to talking in front of this many people at a commission meeting, so.
Thanks for getting out the extra chairs.
Oh, anything we can do. Okay, so this last quarter of the year, we ended pretty strong. I was a little nervous with our December numbers. It was slow, but October, we ended up, every month, we ended up, up from previous contacts. For, so that's good. It was fourteen in October. Let's see, fifty-nine in November. That was crazy. And then thirty-nine in December, and like I said, December was a little slow, so just in the last quarter alone from last year, we were up a hundred and twelve. Then I thought, just for something fun, let's I ran some numbers just to see, and just off of new claims that were awarded by the VA from October to the end of the year was for Yankton, and they're just new claims only, so new money in. Little over twenty-nine thousand dollars. So, and that was nineteen claims altogether that brought up that much money, so that's good for everybody. We had, I had my coffee with vets in October, December, and January, didn't have it in November since I wasn't even in state. The numbers are declining. I'm looking for ways to increase, so any ideas are helpful. I have been utilizing social media, radio, and papers, so not really sure. Maybe it's my speakers, so trying to get better speakers. VA will be here in March, though. That's kind of a big one. I got the eligibility to come down, so did a little bit of trading with that that I'll talk about here in future. Met with the social workers out in the Human Services Center, which was an amazing contact to have out there. Been in contact with quite a few of the social workers out there now. Met with the Optimist Club and the Interchange Club. Just met with the Interchange yesterday. I have an outreach set up the end of this month. That's where I did some trading with the VA. There, that's why they're coming down, because I was able to get them into the gun show the end of this month. So I'm working with them in those events, so. And the individual is coming from the VA is the eligibility and suicide prevention. I went over our numbers. Any questions?
Seems like you're staying busy.
Trying. I do have training tomorrow, so I'll be out of the office. I'll be in Sioux Falls, so. And then, oh, last big thing, I got my accreditation through the VA, so I'll be able hopefully, I'm supposed to begin my access this Thursday, so I gotta leave Thursday to go up to Sioux Falls, get my ID card. But I'll be having access now to veterans' information if they need it, so that's a, that only took from August to now to get that done.
Keep up the good work.
Thanks, Cody.
All right, thank you.
Move approval of the Veteran Service Officer Quarterly Report.
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Onto welfare quarterly, say Troy, welcome.
How's it going?
Good.
I have our numbers at the contact center the last quarter, October, November, and December. October, we had one hundred and twenty-eight visits, November, one forty-one, and December, one twenty. We had a total of three hundred and eighty-nine visits, feeding approximately one thousand one hundred and sixty-seven people. One hundred and forty-three or seventeen younger. For some reason, I think that number is probably higher. I don't know why that's there. New clients, we had fifty-six new families that made contact with us for services, nineteen in October, twenty-two in November, fifteen in December. Thirty-two houses, households were helped with emergency services. Being rent or utilities or lodging. We had a hundred and seventy-five dollars in fuel cost to get people to medical appointments in the quarter, eight hundred and fifty dollars assistance with rent. Utility, seven hundred and sixteen dollars, two hundred and twelve dollars for medications. Lodging was three hundred and fifty dollars, which is mainly motels for people that don't have anywhere to go. And we have a lot, I have a lot of referrals from all over town for people. There's people all over that are homeless. Food pantry, approximately twenty-one thousand dollars in food was handed out. We had our holiday baskets and food baskets for the home bomb people and meals, which was about sixteen thousand dollars in cost, our total cost for the quarter was thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-six. And we're just keeping busy.
Been down there a couple times, and I know you're always busy and.
Yeah, yeah, we're doing, we're doing okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good night.
Thank you, Troy.
Move approval of the welfare quarterly report.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve welfare quarterly reports. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, onto item ten, Mr. Scherschlick.
Well, good evening. I'm here for two different things that are on the agenda tonight. First is, as you were talking earlier about the COVID on its rampage, if you will. We're looking at the, we did a survey amongst all the departments in the county and seeing what they needed for PPE, and if you look on the spreadsheet that I gave you, line number one was the items that were requested from the different departments. That's actually a total of everybody across the bar. There were a couple departments haven't got back to me, so we kind of figured that maybe they might need an extra couple boxes of masks and maybe some gloves, so anyway, we averaged it out. Item number two is what we actually have on hand over at the office and shed out back. So I went online and looked at our dealers that we buy the stuff from in the past and put the dollar figures in there. So in line number three, that's how many we need to order. And line four, or number four, excuse me, would be what the total amount of everything would be, ten thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-one cents to buy what we need if we use what we've got on hand also. So in other words, if what everybody needs plus that dollar amount, we would be out by the time we got done buying or handing it all out. So my suggestion was be, if possible, in line number five is what everything would cost of what is needed by the departments. And that's a total of fifteen thousand one fifty seventy-nine. And a lot of this stuff is included to the EMS with Steve and with the sheriff's office with the jail and the staff over there, our big numbers. But I wanted to give you like two different options, knowing that, I mean, where there's what we need amongst the departments, and all Patty needs and stuff for elections and things like that, if we take what's in inventory and give it out, we basically going to be out. But it's your guys' decision. I'm looking at using, if it's possible, all possible, using the ARPA funds to purchase this under COVID, the COVID monies that were received and to go ahead and purchase this stuff and get it out to our departments as they see need. So that's my first item. So I don't know how you want to, you want to do this one first or go through both of them?
Yeah, we'll handle.
Okay.
Because I, we bought a bunch of this stuff and we've gone through, I imagine, a tremendous amount. I know last year we used a lot of the COVID dollars to do this, so it's not just sitting there. It's, it's going out where it needs to go, and, and I can see by your only having seven things of Clorox wipes, and you're, you're getting pretty low on stuff.
At the beginning or through the COVID, we did about forty thousand dollars with the stuff through all the departments and added all up to for COVID. This is here to get us through this year. You know, we gotta, we gotta come back next year. We're not counting on that. It's all gonna be gone. But this to get us through the year, hopefully, and making sure that we have the supplies that we need for our, our staff and for our responders that are going out of the EMS and the sheriff's office.
Availability of these items are available.
So far, I think we need to go soon rather than hold off because of numbers are going up. I don't know what's going to happen, but right now everything is available.
Ready for a motion?
Ready.
So I would move to approve the expenditure of fifteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-nine cents in COVID-related supplies to be taken from the ARPA funds.
Second.
Motion by Low, second by Kettering to expend fifteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-nine cents for PPE. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay.
Okay.
On the radios.
Item number two. As most of you may, knew, may know, as most of you may know, or don't know, that in next year we're meaning to upgrade our P twenty-five, our digital radios, the P twenty-five compliance. One of the things that we looked at is that under the ARPA funds, you just can be used that because most of the monies that we're allocating radios for are for emergency response and they are tied in with COVID. So in the first box up on top, those are what we're looking at for the county. And that includes the highway department, EMS, search, well, my department, search and rescue, sheriff's office, and EMS. And if you see down there, the quantities needed in the left-hand column, there's twenty-three, that would be the mobiles to put in the trucks, ambulances, things of that, to bring it up, the snuff. Those are the quantities, portable radios or what is needed to replace the digitals that we have now that are not P twenty-five compliant. All in all, adding those two together, it comes up to a hundred and six thousand two eighty-one twenty-six. The bottom box below this, this is, I put this together as a, I want to say as a, a means, but the same agencies, the public safety agencies out in the county have the same problems as that we do, is that in next year, they're going to be required to have their radios replaced. And instead of making sure that every, they have every radio, this is just something to get them going or keep them going, if you will, and most of them are for first responder groups that work with the ambulance, that may work on a car accident, things of that nature, so they're all being able to communicate on the state radio system. We're working real hard to get everybody switched over to the state system because it just works much, much better. So in all, and that part of that process is seventy-three thousand six, seventy-three thousand six hundred and seventy-two fifteen. Overall, if we was to do the whole package, it's one hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-one cents. And that includes programming and install radios for the mobiles that are out there. If you read the, in the back of your page, Sherry sent this to me, and we were verifying at the last page on here, it talks about the ARPA funds and how they could be used because we're using it for, you know, public safety and in that matter. So it's, it's a suggestion, the radios are quite a ways out because, you know, the whole state's got to switch. So, but one of the questions that we had, it isn't a all or none, it's just, I mean, if anything, the top one for sure, but I'm I'm here advocating for all of it for the simple reason we all work together in a county when it comes to, to an emergency or disaster, and we need to be able to communicate amongst ourselves. Or what's everybody, I shouldn't say, just amongst ourselves. So that is my question or proposal.
That page that Paul referred to is from Ida Bailey. Because another county had asked the exact same question, so we didn't have to ask it.
Paul, is this the number of radios we have now? Are we adding radios?
This is the number we have now.
Okay, so we're doing a one-for-one exchange. We're not adding.
Nope.
Okay, do we, do we need this many? I mean, I know the search and rescue, do, do we need eight? Or can we get by with less?
I have three vehicles that need radios.
So you have three.
Birth separation center needed to be replaced and one in the command post. So I mean, in all.
So you need, you need.
I need that many. I'm not adding any to the fleet. The ones that we, digitals that we do have now come P twenty-five, whenever that day is in May or in twenty twenty-three, they're going to be turned off. We just won't be able to use it as far as digital radios. They can be used as an analog radio, but that doesn't do us any good with digital.
I did briefly ask our state legislatures or kind of poked around in the last couple months to see if any of their ARPA funding would be coming to this effort because they're essentially the ones forcing us to do that. And I did not get a, a positive response from that. I see there's a bill out there to upgrade something about their state radio system, but I think it has to do with certain areas of the state.
A lot of them are dealing with the repeater sites.
Exactly.
Tower sites.
Nothing to do with radios itself for any county, city, fire department, nothing, so.
It's literally the backbone of the system, and then we will have to get the radios to go on to it, is what they're looking at doing, from my understanding.
Yep. Question for you, Paul.
Yes.
So down below, our fire departments essentially. Do you know how many radios they currently have? Because you made the statement, this is just to get them started.
I know that every one of their trucks has a digital radio in them.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm, last of all, I can give you, we have seven trucks.
Right.
That would need seven mobile radios. We were working on homeland security, but with homeland security, we're lucky to get maybe one or two because everybody is trying to do homeland security at the same time. So we've got one here, one there. I know last year Steve got some, I think. We got one from the state through the COVID money through the EMS side. But I mean, for them to get seven radios or six radios or whatever, that's just not possible. This year, it's even going to be tighter because everybody is going to be applying for same radios. Just because we're running out of time. But again, like I said, this is a, I'm doing the whole thing because I think it's important, but that this is your guys' decision whether you want to do just county or do the whole back.
And you've spoke with all the rural fire departments and they're, they're on board with this.
Yep.
Is there a possibility, Patty, of using some nine-one-one dollars for radios, or is that the question?
That's such a specialized, you can't spend it for.
From my. My understanding on the nine-one-one, that can only be used like if you want to put a radio in dispatch. Jim is in there somewhere.
Yeah.
Maybe he was anyway.
I think he's, oh.
I think he would be more of a professional person to speak on that.
Nine-one-one dollars, they can be, can only in dispatch or?
Can only be used within the dispatch facility of the state.
Okay. That makes sense.
Okay. Any thoughts?
Don.
I think Don's still on.
Don, do you have any questions?
Nope. I support his request.
And this would qualify for ARPA, and we are getting four point four million dollars, and I do believe this is a qualifying expense. One, we have to do it, or we, we can't participate in the state radio system, so but it does qualify for ARPA, and even if it technically didn't, it does now because they have greatly opened up what we can use those funds for. So, and I certainly support our local fire departments. There was a fire just by my house over, over the last week that they were certainly called to, and, and it's important, so.
I think my only thing with some of the local fire departments is where they overlap counties. I think it would be worth asking the other counties to split. They got money too. But I, I do think we need to support all the fire districts or fire departments, but.
Curious where the police, the Yankton PD is on here.
I, I was asked that question earlier tonight, and as, as our, and again, as my department, I work with all emergency services in the county. I don't want to earmark one out or another, so I'm, everybody's in, it's not a lot of radios, but yet I still feel that I need to be fair, and we work with them all.
Yeah.
It's important for me to bring this, if you choose not to do, I mean, if you don't want to do that one, that's, I mean, I can't tell you what to do. The question about sharing, we go in front, I'm not saying we can or can't do that, but we're moving everything out further and further.
Right.
And, you know, not saying that they wouldn't share, but if they don't, I mean, we're, I, I, that just, to me, it looks like a nightmare in itself, but I'll do whatever you guys want me to do.
Well, what are your counterparts in other counties doing? What are they doing?
Homeland Security and, and I don't, I can't speak for the ARPA. I, I just know that their homeland securities are best to have.
Here.
Any other thoughts?
I would make a motion to approve the request for the full amount of a hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-one cents to be paid for with ARPA funds.
Second.
Motion by Low, second by Kettering to approve radio requests in the amount of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, nine hundred and forty-eight and forty-one cents. Further discussion?
Paul, when do you say that these had to be implemented by? What was the, the hard date?
April twenty twenty.
April twenty. April twenty twenty-three. I, I support the ones for the EMS and the sheriffs. But it is potentially possible that the state could break some of their funding loose during the legislative session to pay for some of this. Even if it's a long shot, um, I would support the ones for the, the county system and maybe we could wait a month and see what happens. And if it doesn't happen, we could spend the rest of the money because we haven't, you know, over a year to implement this. So I hate to rush into it, spend the dollars and then maybe losing out on other grants that are available. My only concern.
I would hope if they did shake some money loose that they could either reimburse us or.
Yeah.
You'd hate to penalize somebody for planning ahead.
You, you, that happens though, so.
The one thing, the one one thing and not the, is that ordering radios now from Motorola, we're probably a year out from even getting them. Because everybody's getting them. So, I mean, I, your idea, Dan, is a good idea. Who knows what the state or even the feds are going to do? But the idea is that if we're going to do something, I feel that it's important that we move forward soon rather than later, but that's just me.
I can support the full request. I think, you know, certainly get them on order and it wouldn't hurt to reach out to the surrounding communities.
Yeah, we can do that.
I, I know we get the ARPA money and we want to spend it, but I, I think if we could be a little frugal with it and try with some grants and stuff, we, we have the potential to maybe save the county some dollars. So I support getting radios, uh, but not the full amount this time.
Any more comments, questions? That, uh, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one.
I just have one more comment. I sent you all an email today about the PDM monies.
Yes.
So we're not going to talk about tonight, but take a look at that pre-disaster. I've been communicating with all the communities that are in the plan that there is a bunch of PDM money been cut loose for pre-disaster mitigation funding. They do not, radios do not. But, uh, you know, uh, stuff like that. But anyway, I just wanted to take a look at that and we can talk more about it.
Okay, onto item eleven and Mike is, uh, out tonight. But we can pull it up. Uh, there's two things with the, the load limit resolution. The first thing in the packet is just a, uh, we don't need to take action on that. That's just a, uh, support from the state carrier division. So we just need a signature on that and send to the state. Uh, what we do need to take action on is the load limit resolution. Boilerplate from last year.
I think it's good, I, a good idea to start talking about it at least because you never know when, uh, it's going to warm up for good.
Right, and, and we have to have this in with the state, um, to remain in the program with them. So this, this essentially just says that we will implement load limits, um, when the time is right. Any questions on that?
Patty, do you know what number this will be?
This will be one.
One.
Mike's going to run something in the newspaper like he usually does.
Yes.
Good catch. Thank you. I don't know if everybody heard that, the, the date on the bottom amended date is January eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. It needs to be changed to twenty twenty-two. So with that, I'd entertain the motion if there's no questions.
I would move to approve resolution twenty-two dash one for Yankton County load limits.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. And then on to annual bids.
He just needs approval.
Yep, just looking for approval to advertise, go out for bids.
I would move to approve, uh, the advertising for annual bids for the highway department.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, item twelve. There is a clock. Yep, from the old courthouse and it has been sitting, um, the highway shop for a number of years. And Mike has requested to donate this to the Mead Center. Several reasons, one, it can be on display and, and another reason is if somebody runs it over at the highway department, he would rather that not be on his shoulders, so.
Yeah, I, I'm the liaison to the Mead, um, Historical Society and this was brought up at, at one of the meetings, what happened to it and found out where it was and they'd be interested in taking off, off our hands.
Okay.
So I think it's.
Not, it's not on the input form, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, but it's, for those of you who remember, is a really neat clock, uh, historic for really the whole area and, uh, it, uh, I think deserves to be back out where the public can view it.
Picture the Back to the Future clock.
Exactly. Yeah. I guess I'd, I'd move approval of the request to donate the clock to the Mead Cultural Center.
Second.
Motion in a si- in a second to, uh, donate the old government center clock to the Mead Cultural Center. All those, or further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. It's six thirty-seven, we're on to item thirteen, rezones. Just so everybody's aware, the, the, these rezones began, um, initiated from the planning and zoning office, they identified properties that were either split zoned or in an RT that potentially would want to move into a zone that suited them better. So a number of individuals, uh, came forward with requests and this will be the second reading of those requests. So we will take public comment on each one of them. And looks like we begin with, uh, Mr. Heine. That would be good.
I just wanted to address some of the misinformation that's been going around about this particular rezone. There was an editorial with a lot of incorrect information. This property is currently zoned rural transitional and permitted use in rural transitional is agriculture. So there was a threat that there's going to be a hog barn. I don't, that's not in any of his plans. And he could put animals there right now if he wanted to in RT. So I think there was a lot of hysteria created that's unnecessary. This isn't about bringing a CAFO in or anything like the animal feeding operation. We just wanted to dispel all that because I've, I've had lots of calls about that and that's information, uh, misinformation, so.
Well, I'm Ryan Honey, I'm my wife Michelle Bana. Uh, thank you for that. Um, I'm going to first start off, uh, we have a, just a short little, uh, open letter from, uh, Southeast South Dakota Tourism.
Thank you.
Just kind of highlighting and recommending that, uh, you know, agritourism is a really important thing in the state and Department of Tourism has been really pushing it and this is one of those opportunities that they have seen and may do like and we like, we would like to continue it. Our story begins back in two thousand fourteen, um, when my wife and I decided we were going to move back home here to, uh, this property I've owned for forty years and start a hop farm. From day one, we've had an idea of doing something that was an agritourism base, but that was before agritourism was even a term that I knew, even knew. I just knew that if we built a hop farm, that people would want to come and see it and people would want to come and, and take in the hops and, and taste the beer that's made from it and really get to experience a hop farm, uh, something that you don't get to see very often. So we started this and literally July seventh, two thousand fourteen is when I emailed Mr. Garrity about everything. And, you know, he, we went through a lot of changes just because, you know, of the zoning and making sure that we were following every little piece of it. And since then, you know, everything's in that area has just grown. We have campers that are, campgrounds that are budding up against us all over. Residents, residential growing quickly up to our border. When we started there is just cornfields. So I really think it's something good. Um, we were, you know, we shut down and permanently shut down last, last year in twenty twenty-one, um, there's issues about our alcohol license and whether we're zoned properly. And this rezoning will fix that. It's, uh, this will allow us to continue to operate our agritourism and, uh, to grow it into something that would be a real value and asset to Yankton. Um, I was going to turn it over to my, uh, my lawyer here.
Thank you. My name is Brian Downhill. I'm attorney from Sioux Falls and I help, uh, the Heine family farm here in regard to this particular matter. And they are seeking rezoning from the current RT or rural transitional to agriculture and that's because it is a family farm and it does operate a significant row crop operation on the majority of the land that we're talking about for this zoning application. But as you have just heard, it also has a significant agritourism component to it, which is located on the, the, uh, basically the southeast corner there. And that is important to the family as well. But it would appear that it would be better to have this in the agriculture district than in rural, uh, transition or the lakeside, um, specifically under lakeside. You know, if we're talking about a commercial operation, we're going to have some problems with almost everything that is supposed to take place there because under section one eleven, prohibited, or excuse me, one thousand one eleven, prohibited uses and structures, it says, quote, "All uses and structures which are not, which are not specifically permitted as principal accessory or conditional uses or approved as such within the provisions of section one one zero nine shall be prohibited." And if you look at section one one zero nine, we don't fit those categories. And it's probably, as Mr. Heine just said, it's not something that was probably considered when the zoning ordinance was drafted because agritourism is a relatively new thing. And therefore, we're looking at all of the different things that can be done under the agricultural district. You do have places where there are eating and drinking establishments in agricultural districts. They're fairly isolated, no question about that. They're, they've probably been there for a long time. We're looking at this being something that has been an ongoing use and that would continue in that same vein. But it just seems like agriculture fits best for this particular situation. It fits in as a natural buffer between the commercial or other operations and the residential that exists or will exist in that area. And as I mentioned before, it's, it's agriculture. We're talking about corn and soybeans on a big chunk of that property. And so, uh, when we're talking about doing that, what we're talking about is diversifying a family farm. It's very common to have commercial type additional uses on farms like your corn mazes or a produce stand or lots of other things that we're all familiar with that go back to that core business of farming and agriculture. Now, in addition to that, there may be some additional things that go along with that, that still would involve food or produce from the, the farm or from other places that are agricultural. And that would be like the farmhouse fridge and the hot farm where it's maybe closer to something that you would consider to be like commercial or light industrial. So that doesn't really fit in any of the districts that we're talking about here. In the way that it's connected with agriculture. So having said that, it does appear to be more of an accessory use or an ancillary use that is related to the agriculture. And again, if it was, um, something where you had a petting zoo or you had a small amount of livestock that was in conjunction with some kind of a specialty cheese production or other type of, uh, uh, produce that comes from what we typically consider to be a farm. That's what we would kind of expect is that you'd have it in an ag district. So again, uh, we've had some issues in the past with people that have had concerns about, uh, using this as an agricultural property. It's currently allowed to be used in that way, as you heard from the zoning office here. And there's a, a lot of fear over some things that would not be realistic for this property. And I just want to make sure that we're clear that about forty-two percent of the border is undevelopable for this particular property, for anything that you would consider to be high intensity or industrial agriculture that would go beyond the row crop operation that we have here, agritourism, the hop farm and that kind of thing because, uh, for one thing, it has to conform to the language in the zoning ordinance in article five. But also there are public lands that are close enough and concerns about the active eagles nests and other things that are going to come into play here where you're going to have between zoning setbacks, federal, federal, uh, wildlife and other setbacks and just practical realities with farm ground that's this close to city operations, city limits, city, I should say, city utilities, not operations, city utilities, uh, residential and other things, the value of this property as land is probably going to stay row crop. You're not going to do things that you would need for value added. You're going to convert this into something different that's closely related to either that type of development that you would see with a planned unit development or something else. And if that ever happens, you're going to come back in here and rezonance. So it just makes sense that this would be an agricultural type of operation, it always has been, and therefore it could be zoned ag. So for all of those reasons, we think that this would enhance the economic development opportunities for agriculture and specifically for this area. Uh, we've talked about the possibility that there might be a need for some special conditional use permits or other things. That's something that we'd come in and we'd ask for if that is something that the Heine family farm wants to do. If they want to have an entertainment, uh, you know, type of thing with a festival or and a, a band or something like that, then that's something that, uh, would still be considered to be more of an ancillary use. It's not the, the primary use. It's not something they'd be doing every week. It's not something that they'd want to have as the focus of their business, but they're getting contact from folks who want to see if they could have some kind of an event out there. And so, um, those types of things would still fit in with the real character. They're not looking to change that, but it still would work here. And so all of those things help us.
Mr. Chair, about point order, are you doing any type of timekeeping or?
Will be time in the, okay, go ahead, sir.
I'm just wrapping up. So all those things altogether make it for a positive development here. This could be something that could be done in conjunction with Ben's, um, brewing or the, some of the other venues that would want to have something in connection with the hot farm. So with all that being said, we think that we still can fit in well with the neighbors, still can fit in well with all the other things that would be necessary for any kind of a venue that would complement or other uses in the area and the other businesses that are existing. So with that, we'd request that you go ahead with what has been recommended by the planning and zoning, which is the agricultural rezoning. Thank you.
Questions for the applicant from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, Mr. Heine, at last time you were here at the first reading, when Wanda asked you, you said you had no intent to do any type of agricultural, uh, operation at all. Is that correct?
That's not correct. We are running a hop farm.
Okay. She asked you, you know, if you were planning on having any type of animal agriculture and you said no. And then in your letter to the P and D, you said you want to utilize diverse livestock to manage the land and decorate it to our visitors. So I guess I'm wondering which one is it? Are you, is it what you told Wanda or is it what?
So, so are you, are you worried that I might buy a milk cow and have a grazing on the grass?
I am asking you what you're planning on doing here.
What I'm planning is to have.
Reasonable question.
To, to supplement the hop production, there's several different, uh, papers out there that, uh, especially under, uh, SARE, which I'm behind on reviewing a lot of things for them, but, um, about using animals such as goats to help graze and keep the meat populations down naturally without chemical, which is much safer and better for the environment, especially down there where. which is much safer and better for the environment, especially down there where we have residences and campers everywhere. We want to try to use as much natural and organic chemicals that are safe for everyone. Like that's one of our big goals on the farm is always to be natural and safe. So that's one of the ways we would. That is livestock and it's not like a CAFO. It is just livestock. It's we have right now twelve chickens. Yeah, my daughter loves her twelve chickens, but you know, other zones, if we can't have livestock, can we have chickens anymore? Don't have to tell my daughter to remove her chickens.
One other thing, just to supplement that, and I didn't mention this before, but if there were other things that could be done in connection with additional or new technologies as they develop. One of the things that we are looking for for some of my other clients that I haven't discussed with the Heines would be something that would complement what he's already been talking about with the goats and other things. As if we ever had a solar panel installation, I'm not talking about a big solar farm or anything like that, but oftentimes it's good to have those things added to something like this, particularly if you're going to have additional animals on the farm anyway, and what they would then be using those animals for would be the weed control between the panels. And you may see that very commonly, there's a actual standard that's being developed by University of Minnesota that that develops the biodiversity for solar farms. And those are the really big operations where you're going to have an actual cover crop that's grown and you've got areas underneath the panels where they're under shade most of the time, but they grow a vegetative cover that is eaten by animals. You can't use goats in that situation. You're going to use sheep because the goats are going to tear up the panels. So that's not what we're talking about. I should say the goats are not what we're talking about for that type of an operation, but that's another example. So if we were to do something like that, then we'd have sheep as well as the chickens and the goats. So another reason why that also makes sense to have this zone zoned as agriculture.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Don.
As I, as I recall at the first reading, Mr. Heine did discuss the possibility of having a few goats or possibly sheep, and he did discuss the chickens. So I think that was discussed on the first reading. I I'm not sure what Wanda's question, whether Wanda's question was answered in relation to that or not, but that's that's what I remember from the first reading. I would, I would further add that I've been in the area down there since nineteen seventy six and the Heine, I have known the the Heines pretty much that entire time, not a close relationship, but on a business basis and and as we casually meet in the community and I'm not aware that Ryan Heine has ever been connected with any livestock operations such as a CAFO or a large dairy operation or or whatever. I think he's always been related to crop production agriculture and I guess I don't see this. I I see this as a much more beneficial in appearance and environmentally than other uses that may be non-agricultural. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Any further questions for the applicant?
Right now.
I have. So current use today. Do you hold a CUP today?
Yes, we have a CUP for residents and a farm and home occupation. I believe that's all that was ever specified in the CUP.
Okay. And that's mainly for the catering or is that for the?
For both catering and the farm.
Farm, okay. And then if this were to. I guess the one question I, one of the questions is, as RT, what is limiting you of doing what you like to do?
So like my lawyer said, we've had some interest, especially as COVID has waned and some of the agents have started looking for venues again. We've had interest with booking events here. And so it's kind of sparked our interest in possibly renewing our vet if entertainment venue down there. That would include selling alcohol again with our license directly on the farm. And as heard in May of twenty twenty one, there are some issues with that. And so this would be a way of keeping all the agriculture and adding the benefits of getting a CUP for perhaps for a bar or an exhibit exhibition area or an event space, some outdoor event space.
Right. So if because I know at that liquor license renewal, that was discussed that if if it was going to be bar types, you know, that that wouldn't work in RT.
And if we and if we really wanted to pursue that path with more vigor, you would probably you could pretty much expect us being in here again for a CUP for a bar.
Right. Okay, so bar outside of the bar, is there anything currently that you RT is prohibiting you from doing?
Well, it's just a little bit of a gray area because it's the the ordinance is overall very restrictive and and so, you know, we're, we do have concerns about, you know, are we spreading manure, you know, but instead actually, you know, we are using an organic commercial fertilizer from Soilworks right here in Yankton. That's our fertilizer for our hops and we spread it and it does have an odor, but you know, we again, that goes back to trying to be very natural and very clean and very safe for guests to always come up to and come through the hops.
Thank you. One of the concerns was with the home occupation. You're not supposed to bring a bunch of people out. That's one of the issues. If it's rezoned ag and he does a CUP for a bar, it's it would be used just like it's been used, but it would make it conforming.
Sure.
Thanks, Bill. Any more questions for the applicant? Don, did you have any?
Well, I just, I would go back to the onset of this discussion. And I think it was described that the intent of planning and zoning was to allow individuals at rural transition to move to another zoning if they wanted to. And I I'm just saying, I think Mr. Heine is is doing exactly that. He wants to move it to to agriculture and he should be allowed to.
Okay, with that, we will open it up to public comment. You can take a seat. We're going to limit comment to three minutes per individual, please. You probably hear a timer. If you do hear the timer or don't, I'll give you a heads up. Try to wrap up your thoughts and and we'll keep it short and sweet. Thank you. With that, can you state your name, please?
Yes, my name is Christopher Patton. I'm a resident of Yankton. I moved here in September of twenty twenty, originally from Minnesota, where I lived for twenty five years in Minneapolis. Ten years ago, I founded the Midwest Elderberry Cooperative. I worked with over a hundred and sixty farmers from coast to coast, most of them concentrated here in the Midwest. I worked with many different kinds of farmers from Regenera Bag to people who do farm to table on their farms, pizza on their farms, all kinds of venues like that. Eight years ago, I became acquainted with a young man by the name of Eric Santorin, who founded Mighty Axe Hops in Minnesota. It's the largest hops producer in the Midwest and I've been with him over the years as I worked with a lot of craft brewers and and small industries, wineries, food makers. I was very active in that with elderberry as an ingredient. I got into this because I had some experience working with Pillsbury and International R and D and with ingredient management and product development. And I have a lot of working relationships with USDA, SARE, University of Minnesota, University of Missouri, Iowa and Wisconsin, less so, working with initiatives like Forever Green Initiative where we talk about things like with the solar and grazing there. And there's a lot of innovation going on to try to get parcels like this that are can have some new ways to be more productive so that small farms can provide decent livings for families. And I work with a lot of different farms and each one has a little different solution. But this is a very attractive. This is the marketplace and where it's going. It's very considered very positive for areas. I mean, families and kids will be more interested in going to something like that and seeing the hops grow. Hops really aren't that big of a problem. I see them growing in in community farm lots in the middle of Minneapolis. No one ever complained about them. And I just think it opens up the way for what he's doing and and I'd like to see him grow some elderberry there, elder flowers mixed with dried elder flowers mixed with hops. It's kind of like the original, they used to use dried elder flowers for hops before there were hops. But getting good quality hops is is a challenge. I think Ben's would be interested in something like that. I've he likes to experiment with some things. I've given him some samples of our native elderberries we'll work with as well.
Got about thirty seconds.
And I think if you approve this, you will be introducing the concept to Yankton. It will help build. You know, you have a lot of people that come here in the summertime. This will be attractive to them. And you'll encourage perhaps some other farms of similar size to do other types of creative ways of improving the rural economy and the rural residential economy here in a place like Yankton, I think is a good place for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to make a public comment?
Louis Johnson, Volon, South Dakota. I think I see it as one hell of a good opportunity. First off, you have breweries in town. You're brewing your own beer. What would be better than having some of the ingredients grown locally also? And the idea where they were talking about having goats. I have got four grandsons, nine down to two. And watching four grandsons feed goats out of a bottle is the funniest thing you'll ever want to see. I had a two-year-old with a weak old goat kid jumping on a trampoline for twenty minutes and the goat was flying higher than the kid and they were both having a ball, but the biggest opportunity I see, if you have milking goats, what's wrong with getting the extension office involved and geez, you take goat milk and you turn it into cheese? Now, would that be something that the Boys and Girls Club may or may not want to help with or be involved with? You can expose them to so many different things that they'd never get exposed to in any other way, shape or form. And I think it would be quite a tourist attraction. And as far as turning it into a CAFO, the only people that can build a new CAFO in the county is the Mitternight Colonies because nobody else has enough land to meet the setbacks. They have been zoned out of existence unless you just put them on a side hill and let them on their run and don't have a building. So I wouldn't worry about the hog lots. I wouldn't worry about there being five hundred head of cattle in there. I don't think that's their plan at all. I personally kind of see it as here's what we're doing. If we can expand on it, attract more people. How many people, I'd go stop and watch them make cheese. I haven't seen that done since I went to school in Brookly fifty years ago. And I'm sure it's changed a lot in fifty years, just like everything else has. And I think it'd be stupid to stop these. It's a step forward instead of a step backwards. Thank you.
Louis. One second, sir, there's.
My name is Andy Bryan. Since they have started, I've lived less than a half mile from them. And from the very beginning, they have been very open and welcoming to all the people in the area. Bring people in, showed the harvest, showed how it worked, explained what they were doing, the different types of hops. So they've been very transparent and I appreciate that. And honestly, it gives a nice break from the multitude of campers and houses that have moved in there. It's just like my business that I've been involved with for many years. A quarry produces material, provides cheap material for the neighbors. All the neighbors move in, crowd them out, and then all of a sudden they want them out. And so this is kind of what's happening to them. And so they have a great place and I think they ought to be allowed to keep going. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Gunderson, Irene, South Dakota. The decision about whether it'd be a CAFO down by the lake was settled twenty years ago. In an earlier battle on zoning, DNR stepped in and said, there's not going to be animal manure hauled out in that place down the whole bottom down there. That was part of the fights when they did the North Sail Barn. So there's not going to be a CAFO down there. There's not going to be large amounts of animals down there. DNR is already concerned with the polluted groundwater in the area and they're not going to make it any worse. So I realize Chicken Little has been writing letters to the editor of the paper, but the sky is not falling and it's not going to fall. Thank you.
Francis, Sir Riverside Acres. I've been a resident of the community for about fifty two years. My first home was down at Riverside Acres, one seventeen Richard Street. And I love the place out there. The thing that bothered me the most was everybody started building around and I couldn't see the I couldn't see the deer in the highway and all, but that's 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 progress. There's different types of progress, different views of progress. Some may be able, maybe few progress in the animal husbandry side. Some may be in the tourism, some of the realtors in developing more campsites, etc. I'm not a real expert on zoning, but so many times I think we look at things in a very optimistic, too optimistic way. And we we figure all these wonderful things that are going to come about. I remember some of the talks from some of the people that were sitting over there with the rail facility over here at Utica. And they were saying, oh, you know, all these empty storefronts in Yankton are going to get filled up and so forth. Well, we've got the the facility out here, but what people imagined and all, and there are places that I think there was even a facility over here by Highway twenty five, bought some land. They were going to build a truck stop there because all this trucks, all this grain was going to come in. Now these things ever materialized. We can very have some very optimistic viewpoints that never occurs. We could, it turned into fantasy. What is the situation out there at a particular time? Sometimes I'm, it's the zone is still uncontrolled growth. I mean, there's I think my feeling, the campers are too close together, etc. The other thing out there, when that was built by Earl Case, the county's got stopped that. Those roads were never built for the kind of traffic that's on there now. And you're talking about increasing traffic. It's a county has a bent to pedal in new roads. Additional roads that'll handle that kind of track that that we're talking about. The other thing that comes in is to we're optimistic that this is all going to bring in additional taxes. It could have reverse effect on the tourism out there. Everybody said, oh, we can control the odor and all this kind of stuff. I've driven by a lot of facilities that are supposed to have odor control. I worked with ethanol plants that had hydrolyzers in it.
Twenty seconds, about twenty seconds.
That they had odor control and you can still smell a lot of the ethanol products. So I am very cautious about this zoning change. Thank you.
Sir, can you spell your last name for the auditor? Thank you.
My name's, excuse me, my name's Scott Cameron. Myself, my wife, we own a business and live about, I'd say probably a mile and a half from Brian's property. I've been to Ryan's property on Sunday. been to Ryan's property on Sunday evenings. I think it's one of the best places to go and relax. That's my favorite spot to go. I have probably around ten family members that live within a mile to two miles of that place. I think it's a great place. It's a nice place to go and relax. I think he's doing a fantastic job. I don't understand why people move in beside him and then they want him to change. He's been there since fourteen. I was there a little bit before him. But while these people that are here talking, they moved in, he was there. They're moving in and they want to change it now. I personally wish he would move closer to me because I'd rather him be a lot closer to me. I think it's a great venue.
Thank you.
Lauren Nelson, I live north of Yankton here. A couple of things. After that letter to the editor and the P and D, it got my interest peaked of what was going on. I haven't been to some of the meetings. So I spent the weekend going through the tapes, video online of what was going on. And one thing that concerns me is the fact that I heard a lot of, I'm afraid, I'm afraid, I'm fearful, I'm fearful of what's going to happen. And I hope as a, as a commission that you don't make decisions out of fear or being afraid of something. One thing I, you know, talking about being afraid or fearful, you know, one of the other zonings that you're going to deal with tonight, you're going to change forty acres, I believe, to, from RT to R2 up on eighty-one, correct? To residential?
That's a proposal, yes.
Yep, yep. That's forty acres, correct?
Yes.
R2 means that you can have one acre lots for housing.
Correct.
So I could have possibly down the road, a mile, two miles from my house, forty houses. Who was there first? Me, my farm, the gravel pit that's going in? You put forty houses there, you're going to have to start having people complaining about noise from the gravel pit smell. And again, it's, it's the same situation, you know? Who was there first? And I look at Mr. Heine and, you know, I see his family. You have five kids, I believe? Yeah. Do you want to pass that on to your, your children? Yeah, yeah. Are, is Yankton County a county where families can pass on their operation to the next generation? Are you providing an environment? Are you providing ordinances and laws to pass on? And the thing about it is being able to pass on means you have to diversify. Perfect example, I don't know if you're familiar with Stenzland Farms. You know, when the dairy prices went south here, I don't know how many years ago, the dad and the grandpa were ready to quit. The sons decided to say, hey, let's make some cheese. Let's make some milk out of our, our dairy. And now they have three businesses in Sioux Falls and they're doing very successfully. They diversify. They did something besides rokops and just baking, you know, milk. They made products from it. So I'm just saying, is, is, you know, I, I don't, I don't see the commotion and watching those tapes and, and stuff. I don't see the commotion of changing from RT to a residential R2, correct? I, you know, I think it's R2, right? That you're, you're changing somebody's too. There's no commotion about that. But those places, some of those places that you're doing that are in agricultural areas. We were there first and same with, he was there first. And the people around him are trying to make him change, make him not being able to sustain himself and to be able to pass that farm onto his, his children.
Thank you. Anybody else care to make public comment out in the hallway?
Hello, my name's Ted Miller. Been familiar with the Heines all my life. We went to high school together with both Ryan and Michelle. I'm actually an employee of Michelle and, Michelle and Ryan's. Great people to work for, work in the catering and the hops yard and also have many other connections. I am part owner of Backspace Brewing Company here in town. If you talk to, the brewery world is very close and knit throughout the whole state. And if you go to Rapid City, to Sioux Falls, any corner of the state, and you talk about the hops that Ryan's grows, all the breweries are using them and he's growing a quality product. And any brewery you talk to, if you mention Six Meridian Hop Farm, oh, I use their challenger, I use their Chinook. It's just a wonderfully run facility. Another aspect of my interest in, in all of this is, my wife Alice and I are also songwriters. We're musicians here in town. I'm sure everybody knows Yankton has a wonderful, pretty eclectic music community. There's a lot of artists here write original music. And Alice and I do that and they do a great job of supporting all the artists here in town and it's all just a wonderful way, I think, to put Yankton on the map. So thank you.
Thanks. Come on. Forward. Are you coming up? Okay, come on up. Okay.
Commissioners, my name is Ross Denherter. I'm a local attorney here, citizen of Yankton County and the city. I've got some handouts here for you guys. One of them is an email that I was authorized to provide to the commission by the attorney for the Christiansons. So that would be Deerfield Truck and Equipment, the people who own the property adjacent to the south on the east side, an area that's currently zoned residential. This particular shows they're in opposition to this particular request. And it speaks for itself. You're welcome to read it. One of the things I thought this commission also might find helpful is a memo outlining the law as it relates to when it's legal to spot zone. So I prepared that for each of you to review and I've indicated how it relates to this particular issue. With the use of my three minutes, I'd like to hit the highlights of that though. I wrote that really for a layperson to consume, but it is four minutes, or four pages in length. So I'm going to hit the high points for you. Essentially, anytime that you guys are considering changing a zone where you're creating a small island of property with restrictions on its use differently from those imposed by the surrounding property, we call that spot zoning. And generally it's frowned upon, but it's not always illegal. So this is a good example of spot zoning. Many of what you guys are doing today, many of these requests do constitute spot zoning. That doesn't mean it's unlawful, okay? There's just a constant constitutional criteria that you guys need to overlay. So if you're inclined to vote in favor, you need to be weighing these considerations in your mind because that's what the judge will do on appeal to the court. If this is going to be upheld, you have to be able to, to meet this criteria. There are three factors that courts look at. One minute, okay. So there are three factors that courts look at to determine whether spot zoning is legal or illegal. One, whether the new zone is related to an object of police power of the county. That, does it relate to the public health, safety, morals or general welfare? Two, is the spot zoning supported by the county's comprehensive plan? You guys have one. It goes back to two thousand and four. And then third, whether there's a reasonable basis for treating the spot zone properly differently, treating the spot zone property differently from the surrounding property. And there's four considerations for that. One, the size of the spot zone, the smaller, the more it's frowned upon. Two, the uses of the surrounding property. Three, the changing conditions of the area and the uses for, the use to which the subject property has been put and its suitability and adaptability for various uses. So you need to be able to articulate in your mind how it fits if it's going to be lawful. Now, having said that, I want you guys to understand what this guy is doing is okay. What he wants to do is okay. Changing the zone is not the right way to get there.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Phil Spady. I have a couple of businesses and a couple, my family has a couple of businesses and a couple vacation rentals in the area. This is kind of right in the heart of the area. I like the idea of the farm. I like the idea of the hops. I think most of the people, the fear of any people in this area would be the fear of the manure and the animals, the smell of the animals, the the insects that the animals bring and the smell that the animals bring and the amount of animals that could be there. I don't know what happens if they sell the property later with the zoning and if zoning stays, that might be a concern. I like the idea of the hops farm. I really don't like the, the way that we're getting there. Thank you.
Is there any more in the hallway that are coming forward?
Hi, my, my name is Matt Evans. One of the things I'd like to provide you guys with is the new coffee shop that just went in. I talked to him and he does have a letter in opposition to this. I think one of the main things that really needs to be focused on here. I don't have a problem with the hops here. I think if we can find a different way to get there, if, if I remember right, down the road, like with Randy Golden's property, I could be wrong. If I remember right, they tried doing that ag down there and decided to do a PUD. This was way before the campground. A PUD, I think, is a good way to get there. If there's some other way that we can figure out exactly what he's going to do there, so we can lay that out and restrict it. I think that I am, I am in opposition of the manure for sure. I am directly bordering the entire east side of his property. Let's see here. One of the other things that, let's see here. The comprehensive plan was brought up and I think that should be also thought of. It's quoted as, Yankton's county role in influencing development must be guided by the phrase best interest of the public, not of an individual or selective groups. There is not ag for, if you drive down towards the west, it's like five miles away. I really think if our county wanted ag anywhere near this area in the lake, they would have put it there twenty years ago. I don't think it fits here. I believe the people who want their houses next to ag, they live north of Highway fifty. I, I am not against farm. My family comes from Lake Andes Farms. We have acres and acres of farms over there. I love it out there. But I believe there's a time and a place for it and I don't believe this is the time and I don't believe this is the place for what he not fully wants to do in this spot, but some of the things he wants to do
Thirty seconds.
in this area. Thank you, Sherry. Residents spent a lot of money and, and businesses within a half a mile of this, there is over one hundred and seventy homes. To spread manure and open the door for ag, I don't believe is a good idea. I think that's about all I can touch on my points. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on forward, state your name, sir.
Hello, my name is Ben Cameron. I just bought property and built a home quarter mile away, maybe. I can see the hop farm from my house and I think what's getting lost here is they just want to continue doing what they're doing, but provide a venue for people to come and enjoy themselves, families, individuals, whoever, whoever it might be. And I, I think it just adds value to everyone that lives down there and it was sad to see it close when it did and just think everyone should remember that really he's just trying to add places for people to go and stuff to do and add value to everyone that lives there. Not trying to do, add anything to the, you know, farming that they aren't already doing. Thanks.
Thank you.
Just wanted to clarify a couple of things. First of all, originally this was ag land. So it was moved into rural transitional. So it was ag at one time.
Everything.
Yeah. But there was.
Actually, it wasn't because it didn't have a zone.
But it was used as ag. The other thing was the concern about animals and manure. He can do that in a rural transitional and he still has to, to meet all the setbacks. So that concern that it's going to happen, he could do that now if he wanted to. So, you know, changing a tag isn't going to change that aspect of it. It's already there. That's from what he said, that's not what he wants to do. But he still asked to meet those requirements.
You're not exactly right, Bill, because it's a conditional use for manure spreading in rural transitional. And if it's licensed or, or conditional use in Yankton, then it's not. So you, you didn't have that quite right.
Yeah. As far as having animals, he's allowed to have animals there right now. So.
My name is Stacy Nichols and I just, just recently kind of got involved in following this and just sitting here watching tonight. I mean, we've heard him come up here. We've heard, it's Ryan, correct? We've heard Ryan come up here and say, he's not wanting to spread the manure. He is using, using a fertilizer that he is purchasing here in town. And that is the smell he was even talking about that can sometimes be offensive to people. That's the smell of the fertilizer. And we have that right in the middle of town that we have. So I don't think everyone's hearing what he's, what he's asking for. And like a neighbor, Mr. Cameron just mentioned that he's just asking to continue to do what he was doing. He's not asking to come in and bring all kinds of animals to spread the manure there. And if he brought animals in, he said it would be goats to help, help with the grazing and things around it. So I, I think we really need to boil down what he's asking for. Thank you.
Any more public comments?
Hi, my name is Becky Caden and I have a question for the deputy state's attorney.
Becky, can you pull the mic down just a little bit?
I'm short. Guys, in your legal opinion, is a change in the zoning necessary for Mr. Heine to operate his beer garden and the concert venue? Is a law presented by Mr. Hubner, correct? Or Dr. Herter?
Oh, Denherter?
Yes, thank you.
That's her. She's the deputy state's attorney.
I, I'm not in a position to make any. Okay, so can you look into that? I'm aware of what Mr. Denherter has said. Okay. And so I also have a copy of what. And I also have another question. I live out of Riverside. I moved out there not to be by a ton of traffic. And all these campers are going in because we're trying to make money for the Yankton County. But, you know, you keep adding so much traffic out there and we're riding our bikes down there with our kids. I mean, we actually are in fear of so much traffic going across, because it's always across the bike trail or the bike trail. So there, there has to be some way that if he's going to have this out there with a bunch of people coming out there and partying, that our kids don't get hit or us get hit on our bikes. So I mean, to me, it's a safety thing of, if you have a bunch of drunken people out there. I mean, strangers is all enough. I mean, honestly, it's crazy, but it's just my opinion. Just had to throw it out there. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, if there's, is there any more public comment out there? We're going to wrap up public comment soon. I think that's, looks like it's it. So with that, I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the board for discussion. Come forward.
Thank you. I like asked from the back of the room for the, as a point of order, just to address the spot zoning issue very quickly. As you heard from your planning and zoning folks, this is not something that is actually a significant change in regard to the land use that we're talking about. It had been ag in the past. It was not perhaps zoned ag, but the bottom line is that it was ag use, even when it was rural transitional, it still can be ag use. Therefore, it just never can be under law spot zone. Thank you.
Okay, now back to the board for any discussion.
Bill, can you pull up the zoning districts on the map?
So I think while he's pulling that up, I'm just going to, some people kind of touched on it in comments too. There there were some that maybe looked at this as treated as a CUP hearing as something he wants to do. And I think what we need to reduce our decision down to is, is what he's doing with the land today, what he would like to do, how do we get there? Did you want to talk then?
Why, just if you look at the map, there's, there's no, the closest ag to the west is four miles to the north, two and a half miles. In my opinion, it, it doesn't fit the county. Now there's a way, in my opinion, for him to get everything he wants. He could rezone the small portion where he wants his venue into Lakeside Commercial, which a bar is a permitted use. He wouldn't even have to go through a conditional use. That seems more appropriate. And then if you look at this one right here, the old, that was going to be a fish farm. Randy Golden owns it now. From what I was told back in the day is there was talk about rezoning that to ag because it was going to be aquaponics. And it was thought, well, that's not appropriate, but let's put it as a planned unit development. Let's describe exactly what he wants to do in it and have the zone that way. Nobody's against him having his hot farm and a few animals. I certainly not. I've been there before. I think it's a great venue and adds a lot. But what I think people's concern is, is Mr. Spady hit it on the head. Well, what happens 10, 20 years down the road? We don't know if something would happen, it would go out of business and somebody else would buy it with that egg zone right in the middle of there. It just doesn't seem appropriate to me. So I'm, I'm in favor of rezoning, but I just don't think agriculture is the right zone for that. Even if he is, we approved it to agriculture, he's still got to come in and get a conditional use permit for a bar. So there'd be more to do anyway, but another zone that would be a permitted use. It just seems more appropriate to me.
Go right ahead.
Well, I kind of agree with both the statements that were made and I think Joe's point is, is absolutely correct. We need to figure out what the goal is here, what does Mr. Heine want to do and what is the best zoning, not just for Mr. Heine, but for the area. And today I went through four different zones, the ag zone, the Lakeside Commercial, the low density commercial residential, which is the five acre one and rural transitional. And I made a list of things that were listed allowable in those zones and kind of made a little grid here. And we're in rural transitional right now, which you can have a single family dwelling. It actually requires a CUP. You can have a park. You can do horticulture, which is, which is exactly what you're kind of doing today, thinking about fruit and vegetables and things like that. Really the only thing, and you can do agriculture and under agriculture, if you look up the definition, animals are included as long as they don't meet the criteria for a CAFO definition. And we just changed those last summer. So you can have animals today. You can have goats and sheep, et cetera, where you are today. I think the only thing you're missing is the bar. Am I correct on that?
And I'd like, actually maybe clarification because I think we assume bar, but I don't think you want a commercial bar.
Understand. Well, that's not exactly our immediate plan. We don't, one of the hard things is that we're trying to develop this. We are putting a lot of our own, a lot of our own hours into it. I mean, our entire family helps to, has helped to build this over the past seven years. And, you know, along the way, you have to make adjustments. I mean, especially in the last two years, the adjustments that we've had to make in the life, the conditions were pretty monumental, but you, you got it. And so you got to keep nimble. So I can't say absolutely I don't want a bar, but, or what would ever constitute a bar, you know? There is, I think, Joe, you said it too, is that, you know, maybe it started as something smaller, but then it got too big or evolved. And where is that gray area where it starts to go? And it's really hard to invest into a business that hard when you have sort of this dagger kind of hanging over your head that says, oh, you can't get too far because then you gotta, you're gonna run into zoning issues and then you gotta change. And then you gotta restrict some other part of your business or other this or that. When we look through the ordinances, but fits us right now is ag. It really does fit us right now is ag. It allows us to do, keep growing as we, as we want to. We could easily, I mean, if I was in this for the money, I would, I could sell out. I could, the property values are insane. I could just, you know, if I was in this for the money, but I'm not, I'm, I want to build something unique. I want to build something I can pass on to my kids. I don't have the intention of selling this. I have the intention of being there for the next 40 years. And I have, and I would love to see my child have run it for the next 40 years after that. And, you know, we're trying to build something. It's as, one of the most successful hop farmers up in Canada says that, you know, hop farming is a generational thing. The first generation is only just building something that the next generation will actually get to see. And that's also part of this whole agritourism thing is it's been such a morphing thing. But we just know that the core of it is the farm, the core of everything that we've done with our business is all about the farm. We have, we're looking at possibly growing more fruits and vegetables on and taking over more of the property just for fruits and vegetables simply because of supply lines right now. And things like that. So we, it's really hard to say, oh, let's go to Lakeside Commercial. Well, what's not listed in Lakeside Commercial farm? Almost no agriculture whatsoever. And
But to Dan's point, could you not just chunk out where you want that?
But we don't know, we don't, okay.
The land is owned differently than a lot of other farms and no, this is not something that can be easily subdivided. Tenants in common in this situation, it's going to cause all kinds of tax issues and other problems. If we were to actually have to plot out a subdivided parcel of this property to have it in a PUD or to have it zoned separately. So the answer is a flat out no with that particular plan or that particular option. And furthermore, this is not something that they would want to do in the short term anyway. If they are going to partition or divide up the family farm and the ownership of that, which is amongst several, several family members, they would need to do it in a way that's going to be phased in over time to avoid the capital gains and other implications that would go with that. But more importantly, the biggest problem is they want it to be agriculture for another generation or two down the road. And they want an ag zone so it can do that and be protected from everybody else encroaching on what they want to do as that.
But they can do agriculture and horticulture right now.
As real transition.
Exactly.
But they can't do the bar and they can't do some of the other
That's my point is if, if it's just the liquor sale, whether it's, it's a single event or whatever, to change 80 acres to agriculture where the concern is, and you always have to go to the extreme of what could happen. The whole family gets wiped out and there's a fire sale and someone comes in and buys it. And their intention is I'm going to flip to egg and I'm going to say, what can I do in agriculture? And I can do cemeteries and daycares and horticulture, utility facilities, vet services. I can sell weed, medical weed right now. And then you go to permitted use and then of course you, and the point was made on CAFOs, the setbacks are too close. There will not be CAFOs even if it is a
Right.
But you can still have animals underneath the CAFO umbrella, that, that line that we have put in there.
Sure, which we can
But you can do aquaculture, auction yards, you can do a bar, bed and breakfast, buying stations, churches, construction services, exhibition areas, fairgrounds, fireworks, game farms, game lodges, golf course, grain elevators, landing strips, manufacturing light, there's a whole, whole, keep going, riding stables, rodeo arenas, salvage yards. All of those things can go in there and our, our job is not to look at the person standing at the podium. Our job is to look at the piece of land compared to our current zoning map and our comprehensive plan. That's our job, whether we like it or not. You could be the nicest person standing there, but I, I can't do something just because you're nice. I have to understand what the goal is and then have a reason for doing it. And to me, it seems like the only thing you can't have there is a liquor license.
So I guess the question then becomes, are you saying that you would amend the statutes, the ordinances to allow for the liquor license in the rural transition?
I'm saying we should certainly consider doing something like that because my opinion right now to change that to ag is tough for me.
Well, my client wasn't the one who was told that this operation shouldn't be allowed in the rural transitional and you had to rezone. Okay, the county came to him and said, you know, we've got a problem with your liquor license. We've got a problem with this, we've got a problem with that. So then when we do find a way to fix it and it addresses everything, now you don't want to do that either.
Yep.
So I don't want to get, I'm not trying to be unemployed. I'm not trying to be angry here.
And I, I know you're not.
It's very frustrating.
I see exactly your point, sir. I really do. But you came with an answer. It doesn't mean it's the right answer. I know there's an answer out there, but I don't know if this is the right one.
I'm sorry. Then we do need the right answer. And therefore my client needs the protections that he had because he had been able to operate and had a lawful conditional use permit.
And I think that was Commissioner Healy's question at what was his CUP that allowed him to do that? And I'm not, I don't know anything about what happened since between that point and now.
Sure. And to the extent that there is someone who is opposed to that and they want to appeal this decision or say that he can't have a conditional use in the future, then he's not going to be able to get that if it's not specifically allowed in the rural transition.
Exactly.
So they're caught between a hard, a rock and a hard place.
Yep.
And the fair thing to do here would be to allow them to have an agricultural zone here because it's ag. And I understand your concern about things in the future and you know how to solve that is you can rezone it when they go away. Because anybody else who comes in here is going to need a conditional use permit. Then you just simply transition it in or it's going to be part of the city of Yankton. You know, the city of Sioux Falls grows into farms all the time. And I don't mean to be combative on this, but I see it every day.
Yes, sir.
And when they do, they become things like Whole Stone Foods where they generate a lot of new jobs and they're going to do a meatpacking plant or something like that. It happens. The fear that you have about this is about doing something different. What they want to do is keep it as ag. And if it's going to be an island of ag in this particular area, it's not going to hurt anybody. Because those things that they are concerned about would require conditional use and if it's not appropriate, they won't grant it. That's, that's, it's just that simple. So for my client, it looks like their best protection is to zone this as ag. If you don't want to zone it as ag and we got to go to rural transitional, then we have to find a way to make all the things that they were able to do before work.
Hundred percent agree with that.
Would just kind of outside the box. Because I agree. I don't think, I think some, a lot of the concerns aren't concerns with CAFOs, animal agriculture, newer application, those types of things. I don't think they're true concerns for that area. I do have concerns with, you know, looking at the map is ag appropriate there? If we back it up and I know you said you don't want to, you know, pigeonhole yourself into saying, no, I don't ever want a bar. I, if I understand the original intent is you would like to host some events and have food vendor and a, a bar set up and whatnot. And I think to Sherry's point, is there a different way of doing it? The entire property as a PUD that outlines that, is that something that would make sense to everybody? There's nothing that says a PUD has to be five acres. It can be that entire property and you can outline that it's going to be the current use that, you know, the, the rural crop agriculture and whatnot. You're going to have I don't know, so many animal units, you know, your chickens, goats, whatever. I'm just wondering if that makes more sense because then you can have a venue. Because when I look through like agriculture, just the things that you can do, I don't know if that's actually the answer either. To have like an outdoor venue, to have concerts, things of that nature. And I don't, I don't know where the right one is. Some of that you know, R1 actually holds a lot of what you'd like to do, but it, it doesn't allow you the rest of the land to be productive. So you're kind of limited there. I don't know that agriculture really allows you to hold the venue and the events that you want to either. Outside of, you know, just saying I've got a bar.
I think this is really a unique situation and there is precedence for doing PUDs and things that just don't quite fit.
I do, I do want to note that under ag, one of the conditional uses is exhibition areas.
Correct.
So that is, you know, exactly kind of outdoor events.
I think to Joe's point, if we did do this to ag, you'd need to come in and get a conditional use permit for bar. And you'd need to get a conditional use permit for an outdoor exhibit. And whatever else you've done to do, that's a minimum of two conditional use permits. Where if it was a PUD and already writ, the rules were written out, it could just be approved with those written in there.
But here's the problem. That means, that means, that means we have to decide our entire future in one night for the property. That's the, that's the limitation of a PUD is, is you pigeon yourself out, yourself really well. You can accidentally pigeon yourself really badly. And then you can end up with properties kind of like the aquaculture, the aquaculture property that's set idle for how long?
And that was a PUD.
And that was a PUD.
And Mr. Golden came in and completely changed it. Is that correct then? Because I wasn't on the planning commission.
He did, he did modify it. Yeah.
So they can be modified. You have to come in just before the planning commission, not the county commission or the board of adjustment.
And, and if we ever did start to sell the property, we would have to rezone it anyway, you know? That's the, that's where the, you know, highest dollar on the, you know, if you were to sell off lots. But that's not our interest. Our interest is to build this farm down there. That was going to be an agritourist destination. All the other agritourism destinations in Yankton County, they're on ag. We're just kind of asking to have the same ground.
Don, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I've been listening here. And I, I don't, don't have the access to the comprehensive plan. But I believe the comprehensive plan also says something in there about the reason for the comprehensive plan is, is for the protection of agriculture as a major industry in Yankton County. Another comment was made about this could make a lot of money for the county. Well, I'm, I'm not sure just how much money all those trailer parks have made for, for Yankton County. The local economy may, may, may be benefiting, but I'm not sure Yankton County is because I don't believe the individual trailers get taxed. So, and the issue, isn't there a bike trail out there going down? I, I, I thought there was a bike trail. Out there going down, I, I, I thought there was a bike trail. The, the one lady was uh, nervous about a bike trail, so all we're talking about is, is uh. Little things, the big issue, I think Sherry, Joe and Dan addressed is does it fit? The overall concept of zoning and having like properties in like areas. And uh. Well, I also want to say uh, the discussion about the amount of manure. Uh, I, I've been around sheep uh, quite a bit uh, in my life and goats and. First of all, they don't create a lot of manure and secondly, it doesn't stink bad. And I, I can't imagine anybody living a hundred yards from ten goats would ever smell them. So uh, there's a lot of nitpick, little BS that, that. In my opinion, uh, it is not important. What's important to me is that this property. Has been used for agriculture. For all, all the time the county's been in existence. And Mr. Heine and or his family have owned that and used it for agriculture and have never put livestock down there. So, and the fact that we initiated as a county, w- we initiated the op. For him to apply for this is what he might want to do. And uh, I just. I'm in full support of Mr. Mr. Heine's request and uh. That's about bottom line.
I want to point out that I never asked for RT zoning, it was just handed, it was just thrown on us. We were just given it. We never asked for it. We, if we had the option to ask for that time, we would probably said ag. You know, um, you can't force a zoning on people, but in a sense we are because it was just defaulted on to us. We have a plan, we have a plan that's going to be good for the area. When we came, walked into the planning and zoning office in two thousand fourteen, at the time they had these uh. Big maps of the area, plans of how this area should look, how we're going to develop the area. And right where our property was. Was either a park or public lands and to the north was more commercial and to the south was residential. From day one, it's always been supposed to be a buffer, what better buffer than a hop farm? And and in a small natural area, it fits in the area. You've heard from the residents, they don't like being next to campgrounds, it isn't great, they're living next to a campground, I live about a hundred feet from one. It is not pleasant in the summer, congestion, noise. We don't like living right next to the campground, that's why we want to build a house more into the interior. So. You know, it does fit in the area and we didn't ask for the RT zoning, we're just, but we have to deal with it.
Can I ask you something with uh? If this goes ag. You understand that exhibition and and or bar would need to be a CUP?
Fully.
Okay. More board discussion. You know, I guess I, this is fairly difficult because it's, it's used um, as agriculture has been. And I don't think the intention is to change the use by anybody, by the applicant, and I don't think. I know the concern and and there's definitely right concern for down the road if something were to happen and this is another person's hands. Um, part of the way I look at this is if you look at. An egg, what's, what's permitted? There's not a whole lot that's permitted. That I don't think would, you know, be detrimental to that area. Permitted accessory uses, there again. There's really not. Really not a whole lot. That'd be detrimental to that area.
When I was.
And anything with mostly the concerns is, is going to be a conditional use and. That can be a double edged sword because you, you would hope that somebody can make the right decision that one of these is not. Suitable for the area, but at the same time, if it's a allowable, it really opens that door, so that's kind of the battle, I guess, that I think.
But Joe, let, let me ask. If it were, if he, if if Mr. Heine were to apply for conditional use permit to 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 accomplish this. Do you think the discussion would be any different than it is right now? I don't. There'll be as many people opposed to it. As there are now, and I only count, I only counted two or three that came in and bothered to come in a- and be opposed to it.
Watched the planning commission, Dennis Michael, who was on the planning commission when they created that. Said that these areas were, the reason they were zoned RT is that they were set aside for transitional. And it was his belief that they shouldn't transition back, I mean, look at the growth we've had in that area. Uh, what's that going to be like in twenty years, forty years from now? You know, are we going to create conflict in that area?
Well, if you put another, if you. If you put another, if you put another two thousand trailers in there, it'll be a lot of conflict.
Probably beside, and I think we've addressed the CAFO issue, the, there just can't be a CAFO put in there, but there can be a tower.
Oh, what, what, Sherry, a cell tower?
In an egg zone, you can put a cell tower.
Are you going to put it in the lowest, lowest spot in the county?
Well, for, for, is it the five? What it?
Five G?
Five G, they've got to be close together. So.
Well, I'm open for a motion if anybody's got one.
I'd make a motion that we approve Mr. Heine's request. With the uh. That if he's, uh, if he wants to uh, put a bar up, he has to apply for a conditional use permit.
So why don't we leave that, that out of the motion, Don, if you're going to make it just to say to a, to approve the rezone? Did you, did you hear me, Don?
I did.
So if you could just state it that you're making a motion to approve the rezone for Mr. Heine, I think that would be cleaner for Patty.
Well, I, I, I thought Joe had a good point when he clarified that they would have to come in if they were going to. Going, going to uh, get a bar and ask for conditional use permit.
Yeah, I, but I, I don't.
Only a clarification.
Correct, thank you, thank you.
So we have a.
And just for the record, the applicant understands that and concurs that that's clarified and we agree with it.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the rezone, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Kettering, second by Los to approve the rezone, further discussion?
And for further discussion, I just, I don't believe this is in the best interest of. The citizens of Yankton County, there's better ways to do this planned unit development. This all started in twenty fourteen, twelve years after zoning was in place. I mean, he decided to put those there in a zone that maybe it wasn't the best fit and now we're changing it, so I. I don't think this is a win, this is a win for one person to the detriment of others.
Ok- okay, Dan, a question would be if. If someone were wanting to come in. Uh, next to your farm up there. And put in uh. Let's say a junkyard. Would you be in favor of it?
What does that have to do with this, John?
Well, I, I think you had rights.
I don't. I respect your opinion and it's different than mine, I don't believe this is in the best use when we're. Two, two miles, two and a half miles away from a light zoned area. And and there's better ways to do it with a planned unit development or another type of zoning that would work better for everybody.
Would you want to spend?
Plan goes strictly against this because it's, we're supposed to be uh, encouraging policies that reduce. Conflict and we're supposed to protect, guide the physical, economical and environmental growth of Yankee County, I don't think this.
Which includes agriculture.
With that, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, please Patty.
Don?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dan?
No.
Joe?
Yes.
I just want to, on the record, thank the commission and uh, everyone for their input and it's appreciated by my clients. And they will make sure to try to continue to work with everyone in regard to anything they do going forward. Thank you.
Okay.
Say thank you again too.
Are we going with Markport?
Next?
Yes.
Okay, we're moving on to Doug Marquardt.
We walked through all of the documents last time, right?
Yes.
I wonder if we should.
Valley's on it. Is Doug here, Bill, do you know, or? Well, I bet the rest of you wish you were before the Heine reply. Go ahead when ready.
He's requesting to rezone this small parcel, this parcel was rezoned last year to commercial. He's just asking to rezone this other parcel that's actually being used as part of his business to commercial.
Correct, okay. Would anybody care to make public comment on uh, the Doug Marquardt rezone application? Okay, hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion.
I'll move approval of the Doug Marquardt rezone. Request.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to uh, approve the rezone, further discussion. With that, roll call vote, please Patty.
Don?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Now note that we did go through the findings of fact at the previous hearing. Okay, Delmer Nelson.
I don't think he made it, but he's got this parcel that is dual zoned ag and rural transitional requesting to rezone to R2.
Great. Would anybody care to make public comment on the Delmer Nelson rezone? Okay, hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion. I know at the previous uh, hearing, there was a question of how we'd access that, if that was developed. If that were to happen, he'd have to petition to the state and get an E, get a. Entrance application. Uh, he couldn't force and the northern neighbor was concerned if he could force entrance there. That I'd entertain a motion.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion for approval and a second, further discussion. Roll call vote, please Patty.
Sherry?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, Ms. Roseanne Schwartz.
She was dying to come today, so.
I own uh, twenty-five acres and a hundred acre stretch of land that's on the very south. End of Deer Boulevard and um. We would just ask to be rezoned, I kind of own the middle of the sex, middle of the hundred acres and. Uh, if it ever goes residential, if the ever gets out that far, I'd like it to have it rezoned.
Great, thank you. Anybody care to make public comment? On this application? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the rezone. Further discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Sherry?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Motion passes, Bruce Schwartz.
My husband and I own the further south piece, the twenty-five acres for the south piece and. We're just want it to rezone, not that we're going to really do anything with it now, but. That way if down the line our kids want to do something with it, they're not going to have a big problem with it, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody care to make public comment on this application? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed, I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll move approval of the Bruce. Schwartz. Request.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the rezone. Further discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Don?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Maureen Stephan, is this? This isn't the one that we can. I was going to say, okay. Maureen Stephan property.
Looks like they couldn't make it this evening, they just have a non-conforming piece right along Deer Boulevard. They're just trying to bring it into conformance. We have residential down here.
Okay. Would anybody care to make public comment on this application? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed, bring it back to the board.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion by Los, second by Kettering to approve the rezone, further discussion. Roll call vote, please Patty.
Sherry?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, Dale Weisler.
Yeah, I pretty well went through everything before, I just want to rezone that, get that lot and zone where it's supposed to be, I got that extra lot out there, so. It's about it.
Makes sense, yep, thank you. Anybody care to make public comment? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed, bring it back to the board, please.
I'll move.
Oh, go ahead.
I'll move approval of the uh, Dale Weisler. Request.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the rezone, further discussion. Roll call vote, please Patty.
Don?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay.
Just an update, the, the one that we had to remove, the Dallas Keller, he'd been in the hospital for several weeks, so he's going to be on the March. Um, first and second meeting for his county commission.
Okay, thank you. Great, that'll conclude the rezones. We now are on item fourteen. Uh, medical cannabis dispensary cultivation and manufacturing license, CC Smoke LLC. Doing business as Mellow Monkey.
So I'm Nick Stoudamire, um, it's a pleasure to be in front of each and every one of you tonight, uh, my family's over there, my beautiful wife, my parents, my partners. So I'm Nick Stu Demare. It's a pleasure to be in front of each and every one of you tonight. My family's over there, my beautiful wife, my parents, my partners, my son Max, my other partner Wiley Ras. We would love to, we've owned a retail business here called Chasing Clouds for the past four years. We love being a part of the community and we look forward to future business endeavors.
Okay, do you wanna just give us a brief overview of location, what your plans are?
So our location is right here, it's off of Highway fifty-two, it's on the west hand side, it's right next to Bullseye Fireworks. Essentially where we're zoned at, we know the salvage yard has already have a past licenses that they've already received. So we are gonna do ours exactly within the two thousand or it's a, what was it Bill?
Four hundred.
Four hundred.
Four hundred feet, so we have ours right there, which leaves us about two thousand square feet. So we have did drawings for that, we do have it zoned. We're gonna do a cultivation and basically a manufacturing license, which would be closer to the road right there, you can see the entrance. We do also have it already, we got a nine-one-one address for it, so it's one-two-one-one east side drive.
This is the one that, we have the four hundred foot, only the dispensaries have to be four hundred feet, so I measured from the outside of this building and measured their lot lines, and they do have enough space right over here to meet their setbacks and still put a dispensary building in there.
Okay. We also, we took the measurements and we also did a three D rendering as well of the location. Just to show you, it's kind of a longer building now, it used to be obviously more of a rectangle, but now it's gonna be more of like a, a real long kinda like sliver looking building. Just to kinda stay within those zoning requirements, to obviously follow all the guidelines and.
On, on the site drawing that you have here, it's four hundred point three feet. Away, so you, you're.
Yeah.
You meet it by four inches?
Yeah, I mean, we can obviously extend it another foot if need be or.
Deb, what do you, what do you think about that? I mean, we're talking, I mean, if it's with, if it's closer than four hundred feet, it's not in compliance with the zoning, I. That's.
For only a dispensary though, right? I'm sorry to interrupt, but that was only for a dispensary, right? So I made sure I did my homework on it and we can make sure it works. I'm already working with Morton Buildings here in town. Jason, very good guy. I worked pretty closely with Bill and Valley to get this done and make sure that I turned in a correct application. I would've turned mine in last month, but I wanted to make sure everything was done properly, make sure that everything was done rigorously. Made sure that I took every, obviously, possible avenue to make sure this is gonna be a safe environment for everybody in the Yankton County community and just wanted to make sure that it was obviously the best thing that the community deserves, along with the residents.
Any more questions for the applicant? Okay, with that, I'll ask you to have a seat.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
And we will take public comment on this. If anybody in the audience would care to make public comment, now would be the time. Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed and I'll bring it back to the board for discussion and decision.
I didn't have any, any comments. I guess with the four hundred foot, it's no different than someone saying I'll be fifty foot off the lot line and we trust that they're gonna build their building fifty feet off the lot line, so I guess I don't have a concern there, as long as the applicant's aware of it. So we'll have two locations there that have three functions each, cultivation, manufacturing, dispensary. So.
Okay, any more comments, questions, concerns?
We need a motion for each one?
We did last time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so this one is cannabis cultivation manufacturing.
Okay, you don't have those handy, do you Deb? Thank you.
Deb, are you talking into the microphone? I had a tough time hearing you.
I'll recap real quick, Don, just that we're gonna go through the just to go through the compliance certification with the state, just so it's all in the record.
Okay, good, thank you.
And then we'll, we'll do a separate motion for manufacturing, for cultivation and for dispensary.
Thank you.
Okay, you want, are you gonna fill that out while we do it?
Yeah, I just have to mark out these.
Okay.
It's in your package too, Joe.
And I gotta find it in there. Okay, so I'm gonna just go through Form E with the state, section two ordinance compliance. Are the ordinances limiting the number of medical cannabis establishments within the jurisdiction? Yes. How many of these establishment types are allowed by the ordinance? Ten of each. When was the effective date for this ordinance? November fourth. Are the zoning ordinances in effect relating to medical cannabis establishments? Yes. Is the proposed location in compliance with zoning ordinances pertaining to medical cannabis? The answer would be yes. And does the jurisdiction require the applicant to obtain any local permits, licenses or registrations pertaining to medical cannabis? Yes, that is what they are doing today. As the applicant obtained the required local permits, we'll see. And with that, with that, I would entertain a motion.
Okay, so we're doing dispensary first, we'll just go in the order.
Yeah.
So I would move to approve the medical cannabis dispensary for CC Smoke LLC, DBA Mellow Monkey.
Motion for approval by Lowe's, do I hear second?
I'll second it.
Second by Don for approval for dispensary.
I think so.
Yeah, okay, further discussion. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Sherry.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes. Motion passes for dispensary.
So move approval for a medical cannabis cultivation facility for CC Smoke LLC, DBA Mellow Monkey.
Second.
Motion for approval by Lowe's, second by Kettering for approval of cultivation. I will read this again. Are there?
You don't have to.
Okay, I was gonna say. Can't remember if we read it each time, just for each application. Okay, so all the same sections are gonna apply there, further discussion. That roll call vote, please.
Sherry.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes, motion passes. Looking for manufacturing license.
Move approval for a medical cannabis manufacturing license for CC Smoke LLC, DBA Mellow Monkey.
Move of approval.
Oh, I, I just moved it. You want a second, Don?
Uh, second.
Perfect.
Motion by Lowe's, second by Kettering for approval of manufacturing license. Further discussion. Roll call vote, please Patty.
Sherry.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes. Motion passes. That should be it. You, so do you understand the next steps? Okay, as long as you know you have to apply with the state.
And you are in the window, so you, your application to the state does need to be in by February fourth. Because you're in that first window and then make sure any payment was done with. Absolutely. And she will have your form. Thank you so much, I really appreciate it and look forward to this.
Okay, thank you. Item fifteen, cultivation facility for Roy's Grows.
And I have the following one too, for Roy's dispensary of Gavin's Point as well.
They're, they're on as two, yeah, two different line items, so.
Right. That is the current Soil Works location.
Okay, yeah, so what's on here right now is the cultivation, right, application, okay.
I just wanted to quick introduce myself, my name's Roy Nielsen. Recent transplant to South Dakota from Sioux County, Iowa. I recently had a business there that was in the pet supply industry. I'm somebody that believes past performance is indicative of future performance and I just wanted to share some of the things about my business that we were voted a top fifty workplace in the state of Iowa for a company our size and my hope is to bring that type of culture to Yankton and, and to both of my businesses that we're looking at setting up here. We also had, have given to the communities that we've been involved with, not only financially, but also through other means, we've recently have won the Pro Patria Award, which is the highest award that's given from National Guard to individual employer that's supporting the troops. So, you know, those are things that I'm looking at doing with that. I've also come from a highly regulated industry. My business in Iowa was, was inspected by the FDA and the Iowa Board of Pharmacy. The business I had in Iowa, excuse me, in Arizona is a small pet manufacturer, so we were, had the FDA in there, the EPA in there, the USDA in there. You know, so we're well familiar with doing things that are highly regulatory. Our last FDA visit was outstanding where we had zero observances and I don't know how familiar are you with the FDA, but that's pretty rare, they always seem to find something. So that's why I wanna let you know what I, you know, what we're, I'm looking at trying to bring to the, to the community. So it's somebody who would be definitely a family-focused company. I joke to people that I'm going from pets to pot and so that's, you know. So anyway, that's what, a little bit about me, what we're looking at trying to do. We're gonna be trying to be fully vertically integrated like the other people that were here. Right now it's just the two license types that we're pursuing, I need future clarity on the manufacturing licensing. So that you'll see me in the future. As was mentioned, we're up on the, I guess, west side, out by where the current Soil Works complex is and we're looking at trying to take, follow a lot of things that they're doing with being organic. So that's, you know, what we're looking at with our cultivation, try to distinguish ourselves from other growing operations.
Any questions for the applicant? You don't have any, you can take a seat, sir.
I don't have to say anything for the next one?
Well, we'll have to, we're gonna do public comment.
Okay.
And I wanna clear, Deb, because these are two line items we probably need to do two. So you will have to come back up.
All right.
But for now, is, would anybody care to make public comment on this application? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed, I'll bring it back to the board. Any discussion or entertain a motion?
Move to approve the medical cannabis cultivation facility license for Roy's Grows of Yankton LLC.
Motion.
Oh, gosh, yes.
Gonna do that in the further discussion.
Sorry, I'll take that all back.
Nope, I'll do it in further discussion.
Before the motion.
It should be before them. Well, I guess it probably doesn't really matter. At the end, because you can't check that box until we make the motion anyway.
Right.
Correct?
Tell.
Okay, so my motion stands.
So we've had a motion for approval for cultivation facility, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second, further discussion. I'm gonna go through Form E. Okay, section two of Form E, ordinance compliances, are there ordinances limiting the number of medical cannabis establishments within the jurisdiction? Yes. How many of each establishment type are allowed by ordinance in the jurisdiction? Ten of each. Ten cultivation in this scenario. When was the effective date of the ordinance? November fourth. Are there zoning ordinances in effect relating to medical cannabis establishments? Yes. Is proposed location in compliance with zoning ordinances? Yes. Does the jurisdiction require the applicant to obtain any local permits, licenses, registration, et cetera? Yes. And question seven is determined upon vote. With that, I would take roll call vote, please Patty.
Sherry.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes. Motion passes. So now we will move to item sixteen, cannabis dispensary for Roy's Grows of Gavin Point LLC.
I won't repeat myself, so. Save some time all the previous.
With that, I'll take public comment, would anybody care to make public comment on the application? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. Bring it back to the board for decision.
Do you want me to make my motion first, or you're gonna go through your list?
I'll go through the list quick.
There we go.
Being it's another line item, I better. Are there ordinances limiting the number of medical cannabis establishments? Yes. How many are allowed? Ten. Effective date is November fourth. There are zoning ordinances in effect relating to medical cannabis establishments? Yes. Is the proposed location in compliance with said zoning ordinances? Yes. Does the jurisdiction require the applicant to obtain any local permits, licenses or registrations pertaining to medical cannabis? Yes. Has the applicant obtained the required local permits, licenses, et cetera? That is what we're doing tonight, so we'll see. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval of the medical cannabis dispensary license application for Roy's Grows of Gavin's Point LLC.
Second.
Motion and a second for approval. Further discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Sherry.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes, motion passes. Okay, sir, and then same, you understand that you're, you're having till February fourth to apply with the state then?
Right.
Okay. Okay, with that, we're gonna move to item seventeen. Approved January fourth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes.
I would move approval of the January fourth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes.
Motion by Lowe's to approve January fourth meeting minutes, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Okay, item eighteen, claims.
I just wanna make comment that Bros Engineering charge that comes out of the Rural Access Infrastructure Fund to do the inventory of the township bridges and culverts. The work is complete, they're entering the data in the system, so what is billed is about half the bill, there'll be another bill coming.
Great.
But that, they got that. But that, they got that done before all this snow hit. Which is good. So I would move, move approval of the claims.
Second.
Motion to approve claims by Lowe's, second by Kettering. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. You want to do that now?
Yep.
The infrastructure one.
Is this the, the separate one?
Yep. So we can, we can do it with the claims.
Okay, COVID reimbursement?
Yep.
Okay, so. I would move approval of the uh, hotel reimbursement for COVID quarantine in the amount of nine hundred thirty-eight dollars and thirty cents to be paid from the ARP of funds.
Motion to reimburse hotel uh, for COVID quarantine. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second it then. Would like a little more explanation and discussion.
Sure. This was um, there was a, a jailer that was a transporter.
They transport.
Yeah, they were transporting a uh, patient that, a prisoner that, to the hospital that tested positive for COVID. And then they were um, forced to quarantine. And I believe they had family in town or.
Yep.
They could, they, they couldn't quarantine at their home. Um, it's what it amounted to. But they, they were exposed at work.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, with that, uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Now we'll go to auditor treasurer report and pooled cash report.
I would move approval of both those reports.
Check. Dan, go ahead.
I, I did already.
Okay, motion.
Okay.
By Lowe's, second, second by Clemish to approve uh, auditor treasurer report and the pooled cash report. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Uh, mental illness quarterly reports.
Move approval of the mental illness quarterly reports.
Second.
A motion by Lowe's, second by Clemish to approve uh, mental illness quarterly reports. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Okay, we've got a temporary pay increase for two employees.
One of them are for me, it's um, Valley. She's um, taking over um, work of my um, other clerk and for three months. So, so she's taken on extra duty. So I would like to have her get the, a dollar extra for those three months.
Great.
Move approval.
Second.
So motion uh, to increase um, auditor clerk temporarily one dollar per hour. That's it. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
And the other one is for um, the ambulance uh, department while um.
Troy.
Yep, the, the director is out for.
Yep, so we have an employee who will be assuming director responsibilities and duties um, for the foreseeable future. And we requested a dollar, dollar uh, increase in per hour in, increase during that time.
So I would move approval of an additional dollar for Troy Common while he serves as director of EMS.
Second.
Interim director.
Motion by Lowe's, second by Kettering. Uh, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero.
And this is just an annual.
Now we're to the wage resolution.
To approve, we have to put in the minutes.
And there's the correction.
Yes.
Yes. In the packet, there was um, an hourly person that was listed incorrectly. So it would be, I gotta find.
It's in the ambulance. Uh, Caleb Sutton, a paramedic, is listed incorrectly. It's listed as fourteen seventy-four, should be sixteen sixty-two.
So I would move approval of the twenty twenty-two wages with the correction to Mr. Sutton at sixteen sixty-two.
Second. Motion for uh, amended wage resolution and a second further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes four zero. Okay, with that.
I think you got them all.
I think we got them. I think we got them. So with that, item nineteen, public comment. Would anybody care to make a public comment? Of course, of course. What we do.
I have one and this is earth shattering and you'll probably go home and just hide under the bed and shudder. Is there a possibility you could get microphones that you clip onto your collar?
Coming out of your tax dollars, Louis.
Because of the fact that my hearing is terrible on a good day. And if you turn your head and talk this way, or turn your head and talk that way, I can't hear anything. And I have tried to watch the meetings at home with the computer and there are spots where don't have a clue what anybody saying. And it seemed like the people that have the clip on microphones, you can hear them pretty good. And I mean, hell, this is even a service related injury. So I'm a crippled bent. And the other thing was getting back to oh, he's the hops campground and everybody was worried about, oh my God, the manure. But nobody's concerned about the super systems out there. Okay, and I worked on two and a half campgrounds out there this year. And there was one we couldn't work on in the spring because the water from the septic tanks was this deep on top of the ground. And nobody seems to be considered. Apparently, nobody knew what it was. And I thought, geez, why don't we stick a twenty foot well with perforated pipe next to Hines Hops Farm? And put one next to ten feet away from a sewer system in a campground. We'll see which one's worse. And the lady with the kids and the bicycle and being too much traffic and wearing the roads out. Simpler solution would be make everybody move their campers out. But I don't think anybody wants to do that because they want to go camping. And camping is getting to be more popular. Uh, I talked to guy from the state of South Dakota and he's got a project or two. And I said, I was the last two years. And he said, the last two years were phenomenal as far as camping. And he said, this year looks even better yet. And I said, well, good. Anyway, thank you.
Anybody else care to make a public comment?
Uh, Lauren Nelson, again, I, I, I agree with Louis. Um, I spent, you know, watching over the weekend, watching the, the tapes, the videos and stuff. There was quite a few times I was, had my phone up like this, trying to hear, you know, what people were saying. So, and I think it's just a matter of making sure that everybody speaks, you know, into the microphone and, because you can move them, correct? Yeah, yeah, you can move them and stuff. So, but I also want to say too, I just want to say, I think, you know, I think you made the right decision when it comes to uh, the hops farm tonight. The role of government is to protect the rights of individuals. And that includes property rights. Um, what somebody wants to do on their land is their right, as long as they're working within the laws that you guys have set forward. And I don't think he was doing anything that was going outside of what the laws were in front of him. Um, you know, the, the forty, the forty acres that you approved for residential. I did not come up and speak against it because it's their right. It's their property, what they want to do with it. I wasn't against the gravel pit. Because again, it's their, it's their land. It's their right. I may not like it, but I'm hopefully I have an open relationship with my neighbor and I can talk with them and say, hey, how can we make this hospitable? And so, you know, it's, it goes back to rights, property rights. Who has the, the, the ability to do what it, to, to, on that land? It goes back to the owner. Um, last thing, and again, I go back to, I'm a history teacher. I go back to Thomas Jefferson. The policy of American government is to leave its citizens free, neither restraining them nor aiding them in their pursuits. That's the role of government.
Thank you. Anybody else care to make a public comment? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. Uh, commissioner updates. Start down, Dan, do you have any updates?
I don't have any updates.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, I commented on it earlier. The, the federal government came out and, and really freed up the ARPA funds up to ten million dollars. So we can spend them on any government function that is in our responsibility, all of it. So we do have a drainage meeting next week. The only reason we're meeting is because there is a state law that says we have to meet every six months. We don't have anything actually on the agenda. So that legislature is in session and bills are coming out and we'll see how many interesting ones there are. But the one about the the sales taxes is already in for the counties. So it probably doesn't have a good chance of passing, but it's out there.
I just want to clarify that the ARPA spending is up to ten million dollars, correct? However, Yankton did not receive ten million dollars.
Thank you. Yes, no.
Case anyone's wondering.
We've only received two point two million. We will receive another two point two in May or June sometime. So, and we can spend it all on a nice salary for Joe Healy since he's now chair.
I like that.
I wish we would get ten months.
Yeah, but what that does though, it, and it, it sounds like free rein, but what it does for this, the counties across South Dakota, there were only two, maybe three who were above that ten million limit. And there were some counties who were honestly saying, we have no idea what we can spend it on because nothing qualifies. And they were gonna have to get, they felt they were gonna have to give it all back. What this does is they can spend it all on that new bridge they desperately need. Or a road or something, or a county building. We are fortunate in our county that our buildings are in good shape. It's our roads and bridges where we struggle. But most other counties struggle with a new jail, a new courthouse, something. Um, so everybody's got their challenge. But what that did was it really helped the counties of South Dakota.
I, I did have a couple thing. I'm gonna be going over this tomorrow uh, with the uh, SDCC board. Uh, there's HB uh, bill ten fifty-three in legislature and that's gonna authorize a bond for expended of uh, gross tax receipts for counties. There's also HB ten forty-five. It's an increase on tax for the gross receipt of sale of marijuana and distribute that portion of revenue to the counties. And then there's uh, each, uh, a lot of assessment ones. HB ten thirty-nine um, that would allow to assess uh, certain ag land as non-crop land. And then there's also a major rewrite of this discretionary formula being introduced by Senator Crabtree. And um, that it looks like it's gonna pass and that would allow discretionary formulas to be utilized instead of for five years, up to ten years. And it would grant municipalities within the county, the authority to issue discretionary formulas.
Which numbers that did?
It doesn't have a number yet.
Okay.
Um, but I know that one's coming out uh, because I spoke with Senator on that one. And the concern with that is that a municipality could, in fact, then utilize a discretionary formula for up to ten years without any input from the county. And so that's pretty concerning. I did speak with our equalization.
Do you know that's written where it would affect the county portion of their taxes or just the?
And not only that.
The schools and everything.
No, the schools are made whole. It comes out of the county's debt.
Oh.
Solely. Um, and it, there is a humongous push for workforce housing and that's where that's coming from. So expect a, a lot of bills that affect county um, property tax.
Thank you.
Yep.
Don, how's the scenery?
It's terrible windy down here. Some days it gets up to one or two miles an hour.
Well, we'll send you our three degrees that we're supposed to be tonight.
I heard it was pretty decent there today.
Oh, it was. It was earlier. It was sixty degrees, but it's supposed to get darn chilly.
Really? Okay, well, we'll see you in a few days.
Don, do you want to call? We're gonna go into executive session soon. Do you want to call in or are you?
No, I, I'll just wait for you to come out.
Okay.
I think, I think that's kind of what's been done in the past, right?
We've done it both ways, I guess.
Yeah, we do, yeah. Give me a phone number to call.
You call your cell phone?
Yeah, you can call mine, Don.
Okay.
Uh, it's six zero five. Oh, you got my number. So does the public, I guess. I think everybody here has it anyway, so.
We'll be signed up for everything.
Yeah, call my phone, Don.
Okay.
That concludes uh, commissioner updates and public comments. That's it.
Yep.
Did you want to make a comment? I'd, I'd make a motion to, I'd make a motion to reopen public comment if she wants to say something.
I may or may not be able to answer it, but.
We're not supposed to.
Right. It's usually just for like, to make a comment.
If she wants to say something, let her say it.
Do we know if there's any strings attached to the ARP money that's coming from the federal government?
Strings? Yes, there's a whole bunch of guidelines, but that last um, the last final rule that came out, essentially, they said, we're going to give you pretty much free will up to ten million dollars. So if our county would have got like fifty million dollars, there's all kinds of strings attached to that.
I'm wondering if there's strings attached after we take it. I'm not wondering if there's strings attached when we spend it.
Yeah.
Or how we spend it. I'm wondering.
Oh, yeah.
Because those things don't come for free from the federal government. If we all know that.
That was with CARES Act and everything. So, I mean, that's, that's a given.
What we need to.
So our job is to spend it as wisely as we can. That's, that's our hope.
I just wonder if we knew any at this point.
No, no.
Okay, with that, I'd entertain a.
Joe, give me your number. I, I don't have it in my uh, phone.
Okay. You're, it's six zero five six six one six four seven two.
He, he loves late night calls, everybody who's watching.
I'm married ladies.
The later, the better.
I know, I know it surprised you that I didn't have your number, but the technologically wizard that I am.
Okay, with that, I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session for litigation pursuant to SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two, sub paragraph three.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed? We're now out of executive session. Uh, Don had left the after executive. Okay, uh, no action was taken as a result of the executive session.
Next meeting.
Items for next meeting.
Would that, that'd be the first one in February?
Yeah.
I can't think of anything. I can't think of anything.
Can't think of any either. My head.
Alright.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
Aye. All those in favor. The motion passes, meeting is adjourned.